We've got to start our business meeting. Ladies and gentlemen in the back, if you could, I don't really like tapping this thing, but I guess I will. Thank you. We're getting ready, ladies and gentlemen, to start our business meeting, so we need to have some order in the room. Ladies and gentlemen, please, we want to get started. I know that was a lot of good energy, but we've got to direct our energy up here now. Thank you. All right. The first thing that we have to do is we begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. That young man, that young man running out, get him, Jerome. Get him. Jerome? I need somebody to help us with the Pledge of Allegiance. Young man, will you get that mic? Both of you can come, yeah, you two, come on. You two, come on, come on, come on. Come on. All right. So, we like to begin our meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance, so I'd ask everybody to stand, and I'd ask these two young men to tell us their names and what school you go to.
My name is Melvin King, and I go to Monmouth Academy.
All right now, and you, young man, what's your name?
My name is Quincy St. Louis, and I go to School 53.
All right, all right. Let's give them a round of applause. That's beautiful. So, I assume you gentlemen recite the Pledge of Allegiance in your schools, right? So, you can lead these adults in the Pledge of Allegiance. Our flag is right over there. You can begin when you're ready. Do it together now.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, young man. Let's give them another round of applause. Okay, all right. Next item on our agenda is we have to approve the minutes. There's the minutes from January 28th, special meeting February 9th, and special meeting February 23rd. Can I get a motion to approve those minutes?
Move it.
Then moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposition? All right. There is no recognition ceremony, as we just spent some time in a very special board meeting recognizing our students and Moses Gilbert. And I want to say, I learned something else about Moses. He's probably gone, probably left, but he's still here? Oh, hey, Moses. Folks need to know this. I didn't know this. I learned about him. Do you know he was the first, correct me if I'm wrong, first African-American board member in victor, is that right? School board member. Let's give him another round of applause. And the other way that he made history, and this is how we all can make history, he was an exceptional, his son approached me, he's an exceptional father and family man, and his daughter and his son are with him today, and we want to recognize that as well, because that's how you really make history in America, being a good family man. So, thank you again, Moses. Well done. We now have our speakers list. You know, during these portions of the meeting, we allow folks to express their concerns. We have no speakers speaking to an agenda item, but we do have several speakers speaking to agenda items that are not on the agenda. And I would indicate to those folks, the rules are that you have three minutes, and when those three minutes are over, our clerk will have this very obnoxious bell that will ring, and it will ring louder and louder and louder if you continue on. We're not trying to be disrespectful, but if you don't stop when that bell rings, unfortunately, I'm going to have to interrupt you. And it's not that I don't respect you, it's that I'm trying to, and the board is trying to respect those other people that need their time to speak to. We have at least 20 speakers, and if we let you go over that time, you'll interfere with other people's right to speak. I remind folks at this point, we have cookies, commissioners, and conversation. We begin our meetings a half an hour before the board meeting, so people can chat and talk directly to board members. If you go to our website, you can find our email addresses and our phone numbers. You can reach us that way as well. So, let's begin with Victoria Smith. Is Victoria Smith here? Now, as Ms. Smith approaches the podium, I would ask Lillian Soto to approach that table, that blue table there, and be ready to give your remarks after Ms. Smith completes. Ms. Smith?
Hello, my name is Victoria Smith, and I have two children that currently go to Wilson Foundation Academy in second and third grade, and I fear for my children's safety, because I've come to the school quite often, and there's been several times where I've been in there, and right when you walk in, there's children cursing at the security. I'm coming to pick my children up early, and now I have to go home and explain to them what these words mean, because, I mean, the kids are just playing out disrespectful, they don't care. The teachers tell them, "Stop running," or "Stop saying this and that." They look at them like they're crazy and keep walking. I don't like sending my children, you know, to a place where they don't feel safe, and they feel very, very uncomfortable. They come home, and my daughter, she's a tell-it-all, so she comes home and tells me everything that happens throughout the day. "Mommy," and asks me, "Well, what does this word mean, and what does that word mean?" It's very scary, the situations that we hear about, and that my child comes home and tells me. I don't feel that the kids should be in the building. I feel like they need to be transferred out. Where, you know, it's probably going to be more comfortable for them too, because they're not stumbling around in little kids. But it's, I mean, I just overall feel like, you know, the safety is definitely an issue with the older kids. They're running all over each other, and I was told that they weren't even supposed to interact with each other, the older kids and the younger kids, but that's not what happened at all. They see each other every day, they interact with each other every day, and the little kids pick up on it. If my kids come home saying these words, and these older kids are saying, "I'm gonna, you know, I'll freak out," so that's all I have to say, is it's really an issue, and it's something that really, really needs to be taken care of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lillian Soto, and Erica Young, and then Latisha Miller. I'll try that again. Lillian Soto, Erica Young, and Latisha Miller. Okay. How about Dante Davis? Or Jennifer Smith? Just if you could do me a favor, tell me your name when you approach the podium, just so that I make sure I keep in order here.
I think he's listed Jennifer Smith, but my name's actually Jennifer LaPointe, but that's...
Okay, that's all right. Sorry about that.
No, you're fine. Thank you. So, my name is Jennifer LaPointe, and I'm the parent of a four-year-old pre-K student who attends Wilson Foundation Academy. I'm in support of the Wilson Foundation Academy family in proposing that Rochester Early College International High School be moved to another campus, not on a campus that is currently designated for pre-K to eighth-grade students. Most, if not the majority, of K through eight primary schools in the Rochester City School District or in surrounding communities do not share space with high school students. I'm here to address that the sharing of building spaces is a safety and spatial issue, not administrative. I am concerned with the exposure my son has had to high school discussions and behavior as I walk him into and out of the building during the week. In fact, my husband and son were walking out of the building when the altercation took place on Wilson's campus involving students and parents from early college, from early college. Exposure to this and other behaviors involving high school students could have an impact on a child's social-emotional development. There are many reasons why high school students attend schools and buildings designated specifically for students in ninth through 12th grade, and not sharing that space with children who are in primary grades. Therefore, an effort to ensure the safety of children at the Wilson Foundation Academy in grades pre-K through eight, moving the early college program, will be beneficial for all parties involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, this list says Paul LaPointe, but your last name is LaPointe, right? So, maybe they got mixed up. Paul Smith? How about Paul LaPointe? No? All right. Jack Spula, and then Wade Borns. Mr. Spula?
Thank you.
Welcome.
Well, it's on different topics, but probably Jack.
Yes, my name's Jack Spula, and I'm a longtime activist here in Rochester, resident of the city. My son went through the city schools from kindergarten to 12th grade. He graduated in 2000 from East High. I am now retired. I'm working with a number of organizations. Most pertinently tonight, Veterans for Peace Chapter 23, I served with the Eighth Tank Battalion Marine Corps Reserve here in the Vietnam era, was honorably discharged corporal And I'm speaking against any plan to install a military academy within the district. I won't elaborate. Some other members of ours from Veterans for Peace are here and can speak to some of the details, but I will say that, just a couple of things. Number one, I don't know of any modern decent theory of liberal education that would countenance military methods and discipline. It's obsolete at best to use such methods and discipline within a school setting. Also, the new Code of Conduct and the military ethos are absolutely opposed to each other, absolutely incompatible. Also, I tend to, I have seen that a lot of the deliberations so far are based on the feasibility and the nuts and bolts of this proposal. I think that that's wrong. It's certainly premature. We have to be talking about philosophy, about pedagogy, about morality, and principle before we get to that other level, which I hope we do not. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Spula. Wade Borns would be filed by Patrick Polvino.
Hi, my name is Wade Borns. I have a, I'm the parent of Samaj when he was in the fourth grade at Martin Luther King Junior School, 9. He has had the same teacher since the second grade, and that relationship is important. They've gotten to know each other, trust, and a couple of years ago, Samaj was not doing well. Samaj got up and ran around the class. He was very disruptive. He got into violence, hit teachers, students. He became unteachable, uncontrollable. Samaj was acting out because he had ADHD. It was tough time getting Samaj evaluated. Finally, he decided, finally, I decided to use medication for his behavior, but during the time, the school did not give up on him. It would have been easy for them to kick Samaj out or send him home every day. I did have to pick him up occasionally, and he did spend time in ISI, SS, but the principal and teachers were determined that Samaj was staying in school and learning. What really turned things around for Samaj was the Boys Academy. People might think the Boys Academy program is for the best and brightest students. In fact, the Boys Academy is for the students who are struggling. They take the ones who are acting out the most unteachable and teach them how to control their behavior. When you walk into the classroom, the boys are relaxed, some of them are laying on the floor. Now, my son is above state standards in all his classes. He is no less harmful, but he can control his, he can't control himself in school and doing well. With the right support and programs, any child can get a good education. When a child is being suspended over and over again, he is crying out for help. We need more counselors trained to deal with the emotional issues students face. Teachers are burnt out. Without the right staff, the situation is crying. I was lucky, because my son was able to get the help he needed. Every child should have that opportunity. When we suspend kids over and over again, the light goes out. They don't want to be there. They don't want to learn. The district discipline policy should encourage the same caring attitude that School 9 has. When Samaj had to leave, when Samaj leaves for high school and enters a building where suspensions are no longer handed out freely. Pass the new Code of Conduct. You need a... Thank you.
Sir, sir, did you want to finish up? You good? All right, all right. Patrick Polvino, Patrick Polvino, will be filed by Doug Noble.
I hope everyone can hear me, because I think this is rather important. A recent blog posted to Homeroom, which is the official blog of the Department of Education, articulates that terrorist attacks in Paris and California have sparked anti-Muslim incidents in schools. The Muslim students are at risk of being bullied, and the government is determined to create an anti-bias learning environment. Perhaps most disturbing of all is the fact that the blog encourages teachers to spread awareness about Muslim cultural traditions by encouraging events like Jihad Days, excuse me. This comes at a time when parents are already concerned about indoctrination in the classroom. It's doubtful that Islam and Christianity will be given equal weight and transparency in a class. Now, there's different schools of thought about religious, that is Catholic, Baptist, et cetera, usually Christian-based faith. Our country was founded on Christianity, not Islam. If Muslims want their children to learn it, I suppose they'll have to open their own school, pay for it out of the pocket of their children's Muslim education, just like Christians do. When the government decided to take religion out of schools, there should be no exception for any one person or reason. A religious fundamentalist is one who is faithful to the tenets of his religion. The Quran is meant to govern every aspect of life, including civil law known as Sharia law. Some examples of Sharia law are theft punishable by amputation of the right hand, criticizing or denying any part of the Quran punishable by death, criticizing or denying Muhammad punishable by death, a Muslim who becomes a non-Muslim punishable by death, a non-Muslim who leads a Muslim away from Islam punishable by death, a non-Muslim man who marries a Muslim woman, both punishable by death. A man can marry an infant girl and consummate the marriage when she is nine years old. A woman can have one husband, but a man can have up to four wives. A man can unilaterally divorce his wife, but a woman needs her husband's consent to divorce. A man can beat his wife for insubordination. Testimonies of four male witnesses are required to prove rape against a woman. They seem to go on, don't they? A woman's testimony in court is allowed only in property cases, and it only carries half the weight of a man's. A woman cannot drive a car. A woman cannot speak alone to a man who is not her husband. Muslims should engage in a word I can't pronounce, kekiva, and lie to non-Muslims as wants it advances Islam. There are several Muslim sects. Sunni represents about 85% of the world's Muslim population. The second sect is Shiite. In most Muslim societies, the female is less than a second-class citizen. The ordinary followers of Muhammad were only allowed a maximum of four wives. Muhammad was allowed to marry as many as he desired. Allah directs you as regards your children's inheritance, a male gets a portion equal to that of two females. The above rules, as well as others, discriminate against the woman in her inheritance. In general, the Quran discriminates against women by depriving them from many of their most basic human rights as individuals, intelligent, productive, and independent human beings. In fact, according to the historical record of the Arabs, the women before Islam had many more rights that were denied them under Islam, such as the right to choose a husband, the right to divorce, the right to conduct business, the right to travel without needing permission.
Mr. Polvino?
Yes.
You can wrap it up, please?
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, it's this type of cult that our schools are trying to impose on our children. Case in point is the promotion of wearing the hijab by School 58, and specifically Ms. Webster, the principal. I suggest that Ms. Webster move to the Middle East for one year and live the meaningless life of a woman under Islamic control. I call Islam a cult rather than a religion, because no religion would demean women the way Islam does. Lastly, I'm appalled that the National Organization of Women refuses to speak out against the treatment afforded to women in Arabic countries.
Mr. Polvino, you're going to have to wrap it up, sir.
Okay. Majority of Americans know that Muslims cannot be American citizens, because they cannot be loyal to any state, let alone the United States. They can only be loyal to the caliphate as prescribed by the Quran. The words of the Quran are not hidden, they are clear and concise.
Mr. Polvino?
Yes.
What you can do is if...
Last paragraph.
Okay. No, 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 no last paragraph, but I tell you what, if you want to give that to the clerk, we can make sure we get a copy of it to every board member, but I have to, out of respect, as I said earlier on, there's quite a few other people, many other people are trying to speak, so what I'd like you to do, if you're willing to do it, give it to the clerk, we'll make copies of it, and every board member can read to the very last paragraph, if you do that.
Sure.
Thank you very much. You have a good evening. All right. Doug Noble would be filed by Luis Montemania. I probably mispronounced that name. Are you Mr. Noble?
Yes.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Noble. Thank you, Mr. Polvino.
As you consider the proposed military academy in the district, please be mindful that your efforts take place within a national consensus that glorifies everything military, deserving or not. The military spends billions on advertising campaigns, such as at NFL football games, in order to glorify soldiers and feed this consensus relentlessly. No wonder, then, that the military remains in the public eye an exemplar of discipline and character and leadership, despite its sordid record of civilian atrocities and hospital bombings, its tolerance of rapes and other misconduct in uniform, its training failures in Syria and elsewhere, its disgraceful veteran neglect, and its documented culture of mediocrity and cover-up throughout the military command. No wonder, too, that the US military can still credibly claim to be the best in the world, despite a string of ignominious failure from Iraq to Afghanistan. Within this confounding context, it's critical, while considering high-minded claims about the value of military education, character, and leadership in public schools, that you look beyond the crisp uniforms to review hard data and all available evidence. You might start with a comprehensive 2011 study of Chicago's many public military schools, the most numerous in the country, which found the following. These schools drain resources from other educational programs and cost districts as much or more than they are reimbursed by the military. These schools are afforded special treatment and class-sized staff compensation, instructional resources, and building facilities. These schools are most frequently promoted as a social service to low-income communities of color, who have the least schooling resources available, have few other options, and whose youth are considered unruly and undisciplined. These schools' militarism runs counter to school-based initiatives against school violence, and their discipline methods promote a rigid masculinity, both misogynist and homophobic. These schools define citizenship as respect for constituted authority and the chain of command, confusing leadership with followership. These schools' curricular and academic outcomes are rarely documented and reviewed by local school boards, by the military, or by the schools themselves. The takeaway from this and other reviews of public military academies is this: Beware of those in camouflage bearing costly, inappropriate, and simplistic solutions. Instead, please continue your hard work to expedite a humane Code of Conduct, replicate inadequately-resourced proven district programs, and support the district-certified teachers and staff. This is your real, all-too-difficult, and often underappreciated mandate. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Noble. Luis Montemania, could you help me? Luis, could you help me with your last name? I appreciate it.
I'm...
Help me out here.
Not the first name.
Okay.
I'm Lou Montamaji.
Montamaji.
And I am the president of the local chapter of the Veterans for Peace nationally. I'm speaking on behalf of the organization and our members, all of whom are military veterans, many of whom are combat veterans. We are likewise concerned about the establishment of a military academy within the city school district. There is no place for a military establishment within the public school system. I can only assume that the reason for establishing such an academy is to develop a Code of Conduct and a discipline. However, there's other ways of developing discipline within students. Otherwise, that's not the reason, the only other reason I could see for having a military academy is as a recruiting tool for the military. Junior high and senior high school students are very impressionable. The military would use as an opportunity to recruit replacement for outgoing military. There's a glorification of the military on TV, in movies, and video games, which a school that's established for military discipline, or whatever other reason, would be just a continuation of that. There's nothing more than a glamorous, a glamorous... There's nothing glamorous about military service. Those who have served, such as I and others, can attest accordingly. Question is, are military instructors, are they certified? They're unqualified? Who's going to pay them? If the military's going to fund this program, will they have control over it? How long are they going to fund it? Or does it become a burden upon the school district? Grants only last so long? In addition, establishing such a school presents only a one-sided view of the military. They need exposure to countervailing views, and actually, if you're looking for a school, there are other ways for discipline. There should also be exposure to peaceful means of conflict. Establishing a military academy does not do that. In fact, the way, the means for solving conflict within the military is, we all know, is by force, and not very successful at that. So, as a spokesperson for our local, within Veterans for Peace, we urge you that you no longer even consider the possibility of establishing a military academy within the city school district. It has no place within the public school system. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. David Dornford, Don Dornford, David Dornford? How about Mr. Walker, Cuevis Walker? He will be filed by Rachel Dobbs. Rachel Dobbs?
Hello, everybody. My name is Cuevis Walker. You know, one of the things with me is like, if I see an issue going on, I look at myself and I say, "What can I do to help out?" and I say, what can I do to help out? What kind of solutions can I make to, you know, help better the situation? And I've said this before, that, you know, I go inside of a lot of the schools. I'm a youth pastor, so I visit my kids in their schools a lot, and I hear the cry-out at a lot of the kids in the school, but they just need someone to be honest with them and give them real dialogue. So I started a program called Think Twice, where we talk about how music affect their lives, how their relationships, and what's gonna happen in their future. And I'm, right now, I do that program at school number four, nineteen, Links, North Star, and R.C., MCS, and Villa Hope. And I'm watching how the kids smile, and I'm watching how the kids be very articulate about the things they wanna see happening and what's really going on in their lives. And I appreciate every single subject that's in school, but there has to be something to allow these kids to, to, to-- There has to be something inside of the school to help these kids talk about the issues that they actually have. And honestly, they're not gonna go to their counselors all the time. See, and I say all this to say, I don't just sit back and say, this is going on in this school, that's going on in that school. I'm like, look, I know these folks can't do everything, but what can I do as a community person to show the schools in my neighborhood that I'm available for them? So I started doing these programs inside of these schools, and I'm watching these kids transform. And one, one of the kids I told, one of the groups I told them, I said, I'm not expecting you guys to change overnight, but I know you, I know, as you're hearing this information, it's gonna help you over time. You know, nothing about January says that June is coming, but it's coming. So when I see these kids and the door is open for us to actually say honest things to them, to have honest dialogue, things transform a lot. Me, myself, I've been locked up eleven times, and I see some of these kids that's about to follow that same path that I was on. You know, and I know all of us in here don't got the best past, but guess what? We can put ourselves in a position to help them to make sure they don't go through or almost destroy us. You feel what I'm saying? So if there's any teachers in here or principals in here that will want that kind of service, I'm available for it. I don't charge at all, because you really can't put a price tag on that kind of stuff. This is just something that I voluntarily do. I truly wanna see these kids grow, because I got a three-year, a two-year-old, one-year-old, and an eight-week-old baby. These kids in the district are their future bosses, pastors, supervisors, and all that stuff. And I wanna be in a position to help these guys have some good bosses when my kids grow up. So I do these, so there is something happening inside of these schools to ensure safety, to help these kids think twice about a fight, think twice about relationships, and think twice about the things that they're indulging into. Even as I seen the sign that says, "What do suspensions accomplish?", I say the same thing. So I make myself available for ISS room to talk to the kids, so when they leave, they don't ever have to go back. So just to let you guys know, there's something that's happening inside of these schools. It may be starting off with four schools, but that four schools, it could come to eight schools, and eight schools become to sixteen schools. And if you guys got something to offer to these schools, just talk to the principals and see what you can do. Help get someone to load up their bag, and that way, we're working together. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Walker. Rachel Dobbs. Rachel Dobbs would be followed by Kim Levitt, and she will be followed by Janine Glavich-Hawkins?
We're a package deal.
Okay, all right. Is that Emily, Emily as well?
Emily Kilkenny. We're all on the same issue, and we've worked together, so we can be lumped with our time.
All right, so you can do the multiplication or--
I don't think she's got it.
Yeah. You can, you can handle them. Your teachers, you can handle it, I'm sure. About twelve minutes, by my old method of calculating.
Yes, mine, too.
It's the new math.
Thank you. We are here tonight to speak on behalf of the students of School Four, and we do have some things to give you. Our students do not have the access that their peers in the rest of the district have to a comprehensive arts education, because we lack the space to provide them with these experiences. In a district where we generally have more space than students to fill it, it's frustrating to be delivering arts instruction without the appropriate space for the subjects, along with the other issues that our overcrowding is causing. Our school is currently a K-8 building with four hundred eighty-five students. With the addition of middle school five years ago, we have seen our space issues compounded to the detriment of our programs, not just art and music, but also home and careers, health and physical education, and even programs meant to close the achievement gap like intervention. Our building is not designed to accommodate junior high students and has not been modified to meet their needs. The only accommodation made to the K-8 model was the conversion of our art room into a science lab. The only spaces for home and careers are in the faculty lounge and the science lab. Students do not have lockers to hang their belongings and carry heavy bags with them all day. Our sixth graders in our ACE classes, which is a special kind of special education program we have, they don't have access to the library ever due to the scheduled use of the library by middle schoolers, and most of our ACE students never leave their room except to use the restroom or go to the gym. Safety issues result from the impossibility of truly separating students of different ages in the space we have to work with. We have so many classes in our building that we have to have four lunch periods, with our K-, first, and second grade students eating lunch at one o'clock, and our third and fourth graders eating lunch from one forty to two ten. To accommodate everyone for PE, kindergarteners are going to the gym with second graders, who are very different in size and have very different developmental needs. The gym itself is not designed for middle school and is too small to effectively teach fifty junior high students at one time, because there are two sections scheduled together with the two teachers. Our intervention and resource teachers share classroom space with a special education class, so that all day, every day, different groups of students are parading through the classroom. It distracts the class, and the classroom itself is a distraction to those students receiving intervention services. Today, I was teaching in that classroom, and the first graders receiving intervention were watching the music lesson, because I can't make it any quieter. So the intervention students cannot focus while art or music are being taught in another area of the room due to the lack of teaching space for art and music. This is Ms. Levitt, our art teacher.
Yes, I'm Ms. Levitt, full-time art teacher. At school number four, we are the only building in the district with a full-time art teacher. It's actually one-point-five position, and no art room. Currently, art has two storage closets, one in the basement and one on the second floor, both of which you have to access through classrooms. So I don't try, I try to avoid going in there any time during the day, and try only to do it before and after school, but it makes it almost impossible to plan. Art instruction, art instruction in our building is delivered in classrooms from a cart. This cart cannot reach all rooms in our building. Six classrooms are only accessible by stairs, and when the elevator is broken, like it was today, it's even more inaccessible. Imagine trying to carry paints, paintbrushes, paper towels, water cups, water, smocks, examples, a laptop, and paper for a thirty-five-minute class, which ends up dwindling to about twenty minutes when you set up, clean up, and have to get to your next class with no transition time. Part of the Rochester City School District art curriculum includes ceramics, which we are unable to work with as our kiln is in the storage room, and is unsafe to operate in that small area with other combustible supplies. There is no storage space for student work, so 3D projects are nearly impossible, and most projects are limited in size because students are working at very small desks. Currently, most student work is stored in the classroom, which can result in work becoming damaged or missing, and our students have a lot of artistic talent, and I feel they deserve better.
Hello. I'm Janine Glavich-Hawkins. I'm the part-time art teacher at number four school. I'm actually an itinerant art teacher split between school number three and number four because the middle school art positions aren't full-time. I have taught in this district for eleven years and have been placed in twelve different schools in that time. It's very difficult to build a relationship with students when you're only in a building for one year, and when the relationship with teachers is the thing that middle schoolers need the most. Because these positions are not full-time, there is a lot of movement, and in some cases, there are not even special teachers filling these positions. For example, last year, the position that I am in was filled by a substitute art teacher, or substitute teacher for the art position at number four school for the entire year. I am currently using the science lab at number four school to teach seventh-grade art in the morning. There are not enough chairs for every student to sit at a table, and a few students have to sit at desks. This limits the size at which we can work. In addition, there is nowhere for students to store coats and book bags. This adds to the space issues that we already have. Sharing this space also limits the type of materials that we are able to use. For example, we are not able to do painting projects because there is nowhere to store wet work. We have a kiln for clay, but we are not able to use it because of the proximity of the materials that are stored in the room with it. These are both mediums that the students should have exposure to within the art curriculum. The shared classroom space is also affecting science, because that teacher cannot set up the labs while I am in the room, and some of the classes are back-to-back. In addition, this room is also used by the home and careers teacher at the end of the day as well. Unfortunately, sharing space is not only unique to me.
Hi, I'm Emily Kilkenny, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the instrumental program at School Four. I teach instrumental lessons to students in grades four through eight, as well as some general music. There are thirty-seven students in this program, and that's a growing number. The space that I use to teach these small-group lessons is directly off of the cafeteria and is very, very small. Comfortably, it fits about five students in it, and that is the maximum. In addition, being where it is located directly off the cafeteria, you can imagine the constant distraction that that provides. There is no space currently available for us to come together as a full band to prepare for things like our winter concert and our spring concert. Using the cafeteria at the end of the day for this rehearsal time is not an option, as lunches go until two-ten every single day. Including the time that it would take to set up for these rehearsals, that leaves no time. We do perform as a group, like I said, once at the winter concert and once at the spring concert, and we have done that without ever coming together as a full group. I can see how they would greatly benefit from the time and space in which to prepare for these performances as a unified group. This would not only allow them to hone their musical skills, providing for a more polished performance, but more importantly, it would foster things like teamwork, collaboration, and confidence.
Anne, I'll go quickly, because I can't, I don't know how much time we have left. But for general music, what we have for a classroom used to be an office for two people, and I jam thirty kids in there to practice for choir, including two that have mobility issues and have extra equipment that travel with them past our carts. We have ukuleles, recorders, keyboards. We have everything that any other music department in any of our schools, including the suburbs, would wanna have, and we can't use them. We can't use our textbooks, because we can't haul them to classes. We, I've had to cut people out of choir. Our students just are not receiving the same experiences as their peers across the district or that we could give them. Three weeks ago, we invited a deputy superintendent to come tour the building, and that invitation still stands. We'd like to extend this invitation to the board as well. Please come see what we're dealing with and help us help our students. We can't teach like this any longer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Chantel Licher, Licher and Tammy Lzeska. Lzeska? All right, thank you.
Mr. President and fellow board members, my name is Chantel Licher. I am a teacher at Wilson Foundation Academy and member of Building Committee. I am here tonight to speak regarding the logistical issues that we have as a result of having two schools being housed in one building. Five years ago, Early College joined our campus. At that time, they only had ninth and tenth graders. At Wilson Foundation Academy, we had kindergartners sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. Our school, as well as Early College, were marked as grow-out schools. The original plan called for Early College to go to a college campus in the upcoming two years from then. Their stay at Wilson campus was to be transitional. However, that has not happened. Yet, the number of enrolled students at both schools have increased dramatically. Currently, the Early College houses nine, grades nine through twelve, and Wilson services pre-K through fourth grade and grade seven and eight. To understand the space issues, we must look at the layout of the building itself. It is a three-story building. Early College occupies the third floor, while our school uses the first and second floor space. Both schools are at max capacity with regard to available space. As a result, Wilson has our instrumental teacher giving lessons in the hallway, consultant teachers scrambling to find a random room open to provide services, and elementary music being held within a student's primary classroom. Our building currently runs three separate master schedules, but this does not eliminate the contact between grade levels during the multiple shared spaces and times, such as the library, cafeteria, gym, and lecture hall that lend itself to students encountering each other in the hall, i.e. a kindergartner and a senior walking down the hall together. Also, there are shared bathrooms located in various places in the building for all students that we have now had to keep locked in order to ensure the safety of our little ones. We only have one main entrance that is shared between all students from pre-K through twelfth grade. To address this current space issue at Wilson, we will require three more classrooms as fifth grade is slated to enter next year. We need two proper rooms for our reading intervention classes. We need a proper elementary music room, a room to give our instrumental lessons. We need an additional ESL classroom, and consultant teachers need a room, at least one, to provide their services. This means that we need a minimum of nine more classrooms to adequately address our students' needs. This is not possible, given the current situation. Central office staff have been to our building to address this problem over the last few years, and while multiple solutions have been proposed, none to date are feasible. We do not want to change the current format that we have at Wilson by reducing the grade level size in order to adapt the growing issue. That would just be a Band-Aid. What we are calling for is to have the Early College relocated to a proper building to both address the logistical and safety concerns of both buildings. And I just wanna thank the President for attending our event today at Wilson and to invite all board members to visit our building. Thank you.
My name's Tammy Lzeska. I'm a primary teacher at Wilson Foundation Academy. Just out of curiosity, how many members are aware that we are a primary building? Central office forgets us often. I wanted to talk about safety with the Early College scholars in our building. There is a lot of shared space. We have unsupervised hallways, stairwells, common space in the cafeteria and auditorium. Our third and fourth graders are nervous about going to breakfast in the morning because the older scholars are still in the cafeteria. The other issues are the constant physical and verbal altercations that are occurring in the hallways, not only directed towards Early College scholars, but towards adults, especially teachers. At Wilson, being told to shut up and they don't have to listen to us. Early College has been having a lot of physical altercations. We've had a gun brought in that made the news. We had parents involved in an altercation. And just this afternoon, when I was still at school at four o'clock, another altercation amongst Early College girls. Having to have my primary students use the bathroom only twice a day when I am there to supervise them is not acceptable. Being able to send them to the nurse is not a possibility, because we have shared hallways. The locker rooms for the PE is a problem, especially now that we are swimming. Early College students share the same PE times. Both Building Committee for Early College and Wilson have had numerous conversations, and still the problems don't seem to be resolved. We continue to grow out. As Chantel has stated, we are adding fourth grade, fifth grade, and we have no room. Primary teachers cannot share classrooms, as that has been suggested. In addition, research has not shown that it is developmentally appropriate for high school students to be with kindergarteners. We are asking that this time that we relocate Early College, so that our primary students feel safe, want to come to school, and not stay home because they are afraid. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our list of speakers. I do wanna let folks know, I'm sorry?
She called in. She left the message. She should be on the list.
Okay, what is her name?
Alvinna Manning.
She's not on the list, but we'll take her anyway. Three minutes, Ms. Manning. How are you this evening?
Good.
Good. I'm glad you were able to get here.
Hi, my name is Alvinna Manning. I'm a mother of nine wonderful children. My youngest son, Brandon Harper, goes to Wilson Academy. He's an eighth grader. Ever since he was little, he loved to draw in football and music. In fourth grade, he drew two-- In fourth grade, he drew two portraits, Obama and Martin Luther King Jr. He even received a scholarship for drawing in a program, third, fourth, and fifth grade in Syracuse, New York. When Brandon grew up, he wants to go to Georgia Tech. He hopes to play football on a scholarship, and he likes football because all of the opportunities there, like drama program and art program. A few weeks before Christmas, Brandon was waiting outside a classroom with some of his friends, where they're stealing iPads. Brandon explained what happened to the administrator, that he was not involved, but he was still given a long-term suspension. Right now, Brandon is at Links Academy. Before the district made a final decision of long-term suspension, he missed nearly a month of school while waiting at home. Even worse, Brandon was suspended twice at Links Academy. First, incident with another student cussing the teacher out. The whole class got suspended for five days. The second time, another student was putting earbuds in the microwave and caught on a small fire, and the class all got suspended five days. Suspension happened automatically with little or no thoughts about consequences for children or parents. When Brandon's sent home without warning, I am not always prepared to drop everything to watch him. Sometimes, like, this could be handled with a simple warning or conversation. Brandon's not a harm to anyone. He is, he is not evenly, directly involved, and yet he still misses weeks and months of school. Brandon is worried that he will not get a scholarship, football scholarship, because of these suspensions. He is worried that he is not able to attend Georgia Tech. Shouldn't discipline policies help students get on the right track to graduation or to college? We need to focus on what's the best for the child's interest. My third, third oldest, Damonte Manning, she's ten, Frederick Douglass. She has been having a tough time since started school. What she really needs is someone to talk to, some support counselor or overworked that has not been with Damonte yet. Damonte only has a special needs friend, is a boy. Every day, he put this crown on her head to show her that he loves her. Having someone to care is important. We need more social workers and more counselors and more support to our children. Passing a new code of conduct does not fix everything. Suspension are, are always ignored children's needs. A new code of conduct will force us to invest in real situations. There is nothing standard in our ways. Please pass better policies now. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I would remind everyone who spoke today that the board has a policy of just listening. So some of you may wonder, well, why didn't you respond to some of the things that were said? That's not what we use this forum for. We just use it to listen. You saw people take notes. You may think they're not paying attention, but they're on their cell phones, smartphones, taking notes, their laptops, and the superintendent is taking good notes, and sitting amongst you are the superintendent's staff. They're taking notes. If you want direct communication, I indicated on our website, there's ways to reach each of us, each board member directly. There is the commissioners and conversation that occurs before each Thursday meeting that you can reach us. I just don't want folks to think that you've vetted your concerns and that nobody's heard them. We've heard them, and there may be an appropriate response. We heard things about Wilson. We heard things about number four school, the code of conduct, and the Military Academy. Board members often have, at these functions, an opportunity to address particular items as part of their committee reports. You may hear some response to some of the stuff that you heard today. Again, the point to really emphasize here is we're just here to listen, and that's what we did. Don't be surprised, though, if something happens in response to what you said. The next item on our agenda is the superintendent's report. I will say to our superintendents, and we have two in the room today, and I say this to my colleagues and everybody else who's to give a report, we're trying to move the agenda along, so we would ask that you all be concise and succinct in your remarks and just give us the important details. Dr. Nelmes, why don't you begin?
Twenty minutes.
Apparently, he wasn't listening.
Good evening, community and commissioners. I'm here with Leah Fessenstein, our director of special programs, and I want to start by thanking Jenga St. Louis for putting together this phenomenal event, the Knowledge Bowl, for the third year. I had a chance to see the first round and was very proud of all our CSD students. In the brochure, she has a quote from Ali, Muhammad Ali. "It's a repetition of affirmations that lead to belief, and once that belief becomes a deep conviction, things began to happen." And I think that quote really embodies the presentation this evening, where we are trying to affirm students who have failed multiple times in our school system and to reengage them in ways that allow them to be productive citizens in our community. So Leah has been talking about our special programs that we have at East this year that you funded through the budget process last school year, and we hope to have that same support in years future. Leah?
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners, superintendents. It's a pleasure to be here with you this evening and to discuss special programs. So, the Department of Special Programs at East EPO is all about finding the gaps that have been a detriment to our students, where it has somehow prevented them from achieving a high school diploma. And, there we go. Whoops. There are any number of programs that fall under East EPO's special programs. It includes the Big Picture Program, Freedom School, Special Education, East Evening, ENL Services, Bilingual Programming, Social Emotional Supports, Agency Coordination, and the College Prep Center. So really and truly, we have worked very hard to put a number of different programs that on the surface look like a very disparate collection, together into something that can be used in a succinct way to address the needs of all of our students. So, we noticed that there were a lot of gaps, and there were gaps around information for parents about what could come after high school. And we know this because parents shared that with us. So to address this, we developed a program where we invited community experts to come in and speak with us about college, what that means, how to get there. We had experts come in and talk to us about preparing for the workforce and what the Rochester community workforce really looked like, and we had professionals come in and talk to us about special education students and the opportunities that were there for them, both in college and career. We also were proud to host one of the district's FAFSA events this year, where we had over a hundred and thirty kids come through and work on our FAFSA's. It was fantastic. It was huge crowds, as you can see in some of the pictures that I put in there. We also know that there have been gaps for our special education students, one of our neediest populations. And one of the things that we discovered when we were there is that there has been a real lack of resources for some of these kids. And it, the community is rich in resources, and we realized that we needed to bring those resources right to our children and families, and so we hosted an agency fair at the building with over thirty different agencies in Monroe County in collaboration with the University of Rochester, and had at least a hundred folks come through, both students and families from around the area, to see what sort of things could be possible for their children and how they could find additional supports in the community. We know that there are gaps in social emotional supports for our students, and I think we heard it here this evening as well. We're working with a number of agencies within East High School, and one of the purposes of my job has been to ensure the coordination of all the services that we have to offer, both with the agencies and internally with our social workers and counselors. And I'm pleased to tell you that we have a social emotional support plan for every single scholar at East High School that's built on data that was acquired through student surveys, as well as interviews with all of their counselors. And we know that there's lots of students that have not done well in traditional settings and have needs that we can't meet quite, quite the same way. And so for those, we've developed a variety of programs, one of them being East Big Picture Schools, which I know you've heard about in the past, but another being our East Freedom School, where we work on helping students who have been overaged and undercredited and need different kinds of supports to get them ready with some basic skills to get back on the track of education. And we have East Evening, which is not just for students who want to do more. Because we have that, we offer additional credit-bearing courses, but also for students to catch up on online credit recovery and to work through media arts to give them an additional credit that way, as well as an enrichment opportunity that we have in collaboration with Syracuse University, where students can earn college credit in a science class. And we know there's lots of gaps around parent and community engagement, and I regret to inform you that I'm currently missing one of our family dinners this evening, where we're hosting dinner and a movie at East High School for families. We also have a FACE Committee. The FACE Committee is the Family and Community Engagement Committee, where we work to bring in agencies and community members to come and meet with us, to offer us what they can bring to East High School, and to also share with them what it is that we're doing at East High School. So, in conclusion, we are in fact doing great things at East High School. We are moving in a direction where the coordination has been much more succinct than it has been in the past, and though we have a great, a great ways to go, I'm pleased to tell you that we are making progress.
Thank you. Good. Sean, do you have that clicker?
Yes.
We know how you like to hide it and keep it from...
It means acknowledge.
Thanks. Next, we have Commissioner, I mean Superintendent Simmons.
Good evening, everyone. Just a few highlights this evening. The picture, the picture you see here on our February update is from our graduates. We had a wonderful graduation ceremony, which I'll talk a little bit about in just a minute, but it was on February 11th, and you can see the excitement as they complete their ceremony and are declared graduates. Another event I would just like to highlight is that we had twelve hundred total attendees at the pre-K kindergarten registration fair that occurred just a few weeks ago on a Saturday, and we were able to register more than a hundred and seventy new students. We were very happy about that. A hundred and one for kindergarten, thirty-eight for pre-K four, and thirty-three for pre-K three. And just a reminder to anyone who's in the audience or listening, February 29th, this coming Monday, is our deadline for the elementary school lottery, so if you haven't participated yet and you need to, please remember that that deadline is coming. Tonight, the board has in front of it a consideration for the 2016-17 school calendar. It was developed, Ms. Bavard, our Deputy Superintendent for Administration, developed it in collaboration with the area BOCs, Monroe County BOCs. It's been considered by our bargaining units here in the district. And just a few highlights are on this slide. School will open September 7th. That's post Labor Day. And then you see the parent conferences, our recesses, Regents exams, parent conferences. Again, just highlighting some of the breaks that will occur and some of the things on the calendar, with the last day being June 22nd, and superintendent's conference days being listed at the bottom. But that is in front of our board this evening for its consideration. Coming up sooner than we, than we think is the, are the three eight state assessments. Those administration dates will begin April 5th through the 15th for math. Science is also built into that. There are changes this year. Just to highlight a few things, you may have heard that through New York State and the commissioner, but there are fewer questions on the tests this year. There is no set time limit. Students may take as much time as they need to complete the tests. The results will not be used, at least for the next three or four years, as part of teacher evaluation or principal evaluation. And beginning now, and having some effect on this year's test, but really more in the future, will be a great deal more participation by New York State teachers in terms of developing the content, content and format of tests. We are sending a letter to all families next week, Monday or Tuesday, with all the assessment processes and dates and, and information to parents about, about these state assessments. The, our board is actively involved right now in the facilities modernization plan. We're looking at entering Phase Two, and in order, the, our Intergovernmental Relations Committee listened to a presentation by the Joint Schools Construction Board and our Deputy Superintendent Bavard. And this coming week, or next week, I should say, we have school community meetings with both schools fifteen and twenty-two on the same evening. One hour at one school, half an hour to travel, and another hour at another school, in order to get those communities' feedback before the board comes together for a work session on March 8th to consider all the issues related to Phase Two and to make some decisions by the March Board meeting about the next phase of the facilities modernization project. So that's moving along. And finally, with great pride, I think from everyone sitting here, the commissioners, people in the audience, our staff, a big congratulations to those ninety-five students who persevered and, and ultimately were awarded their diplomas at the February graduation ceremony on, on the 11th of February. Thank you.
Any questions for Superintendent Nelmes or Simmons? All right, there being no questions. We're going to move on to board reports. Again, I would remind my colleagues to be brief if possible. I realize some things you cannot submit in writing, and in fact, I have one exception myself, but we want to just hit the highlights if possible. Let's begin with our student report.
Hello. Starter student report. Yesterday, we had a great SLC meeting, and the things we came up with were peer-to-peer mentoring. We've required a peer-to-peer mentorship program for training for students. We'd like to see this. An example would be a leadership academy. We started a No Kid Left Behind program where teachers, oh, teachers, students mentor each other, and we stay on a consistent basis and path. We're looking good with that. Development of a student chatroom as means to students to discuss various issues across the district, as well as specific school and student government. A young man at Wilson has started that, and by the next meeting, he's going to give us an example of how that's going. Can the School Without Walls system of non-statized learning be expanded? Statized learning stifles student creativity, and many teachers still do not understand the common core. It also limits the teacher's versatility, I believe. All students should have mandatory community service hours as a graduation requirement. School Without Walls has three hundred hours required. Others have as little as twenty-four. Students get to learn more about themselves and their community via community service. With regards to discipline, student voice is often not heard or respected. The adults side with other adults while disregarding the facts and opinions presented by students. On a positive note, we love Google Classroom. Technology is advancing in social learning. The pen and paper isn't working anymore. I believe the iPads and everything's going great. I just learned about Google Classroom yesterday for the first time, and I'm absolutely in love with it. Another thing, smaller schools are much better for student and faculty relationships. It's more like a community. For example, when I started at Leadership, my ninth grade year, it was just ninth and tenth, and we did things such as Thanksgiving dinners, Christmas celebrations. It gives you a good time to network and connect with everybody, even with teachers that do not teach your class. You get to learn more about them, and they learn about you. And lastly, yesterday at SLC, we were presented with a gun and anti-violence pledge. Our feedback is that students need more and better counseling. We would like to have more caring adults in our building and more understanding ones. That concludes my report.
Excellent job. And by the way, he's missing his plate, the name plate, so I want to make sure that he said he was going to deduct somebody's salary. Commissioner Powell?
Yes, thank you. The Policy Committee met just this last Tuesday. The report, written report is on board docs for you. The only thing I would call out is, you'll find before you a pink page representing a proposed new policy that was advanced from the committee, students with serious and/or life-threatening medical conditions. This paper copy represents the information item in our three-step process. Next month will be our discussion item, where we'll actually, I will actually ask under new business for time set aside for us to, for my colleagues to ask questions on this topic, and then two months from now, we would take it as an action item, which is to say we would vote on it. That concludes my report. Oh, next, Policy Committee, Thursday, March 10th at 5:30 PM.
Thank you, Commissioner Powell. I just want to make sure, Commissioner Hallmark, before I move on to your report. Jerome Underwood, is anybody from PAC here? Oh, yes. Do you want to get a report?
Would you like to go now?
No, 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 no. Come on up now. Yep. We, I actually, I should have taken you right after the student report or before the student report. Again, we're asking everybody to be as brief as possible and hit the highlights.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. So, I'm going to definitely hit the highlights. One of the things that we, the PAC did this month was we were able to have three budget forums, and I want to thank Lauren for diligently working with us and putting that together for parents and reporting out on something that she... and reporting out on something that she did not have the ability to be a part of. So she did very well in the interaction with the parents, and she got a lot of good feedback, I hope. And so I wanted to thank Lauren personally for those in the budget forums. We have also been continuously collaborating with community members and the Community Task Force. And we have collectively come up with three parent forums called the Power Parent Forums. Our first is going to be Monday, February 29th. The topic is going to be breaking the school-to-prison pipeline. It's going to be at the School Without Walls from 6:00 to 8:00. All community members, parents are welcome to come. We hope to see you there. We also had the pleasure of sitting on the ad hoc committee that Mr. Van White invited us to about the smartphone app. I want to thank you for that, Mr. Commissioner White. And we got a lot of good information about that smart app. And we gave a lot of good feedback on how it, you know, could be implemented for our district specifically. So I'm looking forward to hearing the feedback and going forward with that if the board, you know, votes for that smartphone app. We also had our quarterly meeting, which was our interim superintendent's first time meeting all of us. Hopefully, we didn't scare you too much.
Still here.
Okay, good. So we talked to her about PAC's initiative. We gave her a little history about the Parent Advisory Council and some of the initiatives that we've done and goals that we've implemented and things like that. And it was just a really get-to-know-you type of time, which was very good for the both of us, the PAC members and the interim superintendent. And then the second hour was when we met with the board, as we do every quarterly meeting. We had Commissioner White, Commissioner Hallmark, and Commissioner Adams at that meeting. We have had consistent attendance with Commissioner White and Commissioner Elliott. And in the future, we are hoping to have more attendance from other board members, seeing that this is a quarterly meeting that has been going on several years with the Parent Advisory Council. And it's our time that we use very effectively to collaborate with each other with concerns and issues that are going on with the district and that parents have. And it really is a nice time for us to sit at the table together and collaborate together on solutions to some of the concerns that our parents have. So I hope to see more board commissioners at the next quarterly meeting. Thank you. Lastly, some of our PAC concerns for this month really just result in, as we had our budget meetings with Lauren, some of our parents were just really set aside because they felt that some of their suggestions and concerns wouldn't really be seriously taken, you know, or validated when the budget actually gets submitted and voted on. So, no fault to Lauren. She was unable, like I said, to, she was presenting something that was not of her own. So I'm sure as we move forward and we get to know each other, we'll be able to collaborate on some of those things. And lastly, I think that's about it. I think lastly, we just want to make sure that we continue to look at the school-based planning teams and the functioning of all of those within the school districts. And some are functioning better than others, and we just want to keep that at the forefront because that is the governing body for the school. And the parent's biggest voice in this district is being a part of the school-based planning team. So we want to make sure that those are functioning at all capacities. That's it. Any questions?
Any questions? Excellent job. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Now we go back to our standing committee reports. And let me just say to our students and to our parent council reps, we appreciate this time there. They've taken away time from their families and from their studies. And we do appreciate the time you spend with us in the evening. Commissioner Hallmark?
Sure, I'll make this really short. The Governance Committee, which is a committee that really focuses on the internal relationships of how we work together as a board and how we work with the superintendent and how we develop ourselves. Topics were discussed February 9th. We're looking at orientation for new board members and how we might do a retreat and the role of our relationship as liaisons to various schools in the district. And that's about it. Our next meeting is going to be on April 19th. Everybody's welcome to come and listen.
Thank you, Commissioner Hallmark. Commissioner Evans?
Good. I'll keep my report brief. You know, ESAs is usually very long. We met Tuesday, February 18th and received a final presentation regarding the final report on the findings from the Arts Integration Project. One of the most important findings was that the greatest gains were made by students in low-performing schools, indicating that the potential for arts integration to overcome performance issues in these schools is significant. Also, significant gains were also made by ELL students and students with disabilities. In implementing arts integration, District Rye would be an investment in student engagement and achievement rather than remediating the losses that have already occurred. Obviously, there is a financial price tag associated with this, and I hope that possibly integrating arts integration in all of our schools could be something that we consider as we go through this upcoming budget year. We also got an update on an area that is near and dear to my heart, summer learning. Just a couple of quick highlights. In math, 59% of students participating in summer programs experienced gains or no learning loss, compared to 48% of students who did not attend these programs. In reading, 64% of students attending summer programs had gains or no learning loss, compared to 55% of students who did not attend these programs. Also, as you know, attendance is extremely important. Average daily attendance among students participating in summer programs was about 2% higher during the school year than those who did not participate in these programs. So, summer learning loss is proving that it is a great investment that we're making on behalf of this district. And really, what we're doing, and we're doing it in a way that is engaging students, is really extending the school year without saying it explicitly. So we're giving our students the opportunity to be able to continue their education over the summer. And notice that we're calling it summer learning, not summer school, because many students are choosing to come and get an education over the summer so we can close that, get closer to closing the achievement gap that we have in this district. We also got an update on projected graduation rates for the 2012 cohort. On track was determined by students having at least six credits. We still have a lot of work to do there. I will say that I'm not satisfied, and I won't be satisfied until, obviously, we have an 85% to 90% graduation rate. Community members emphasized the need to make significant improvements in graduation rates and to determine the factors that will have the most positive impact on raising the number of graduates in the district. I know it can be done because I've seen it done here on my tenure. There have been, Commissioner White might remember this. I called the paper and pencil test that we did when we literally tracked students who were in danger of not graduating over a three- to four-month period and made sure that we put all the supports and all the energy around to make sure that we did everything we could do to get those students to graduate. And we actually saw a significant increase in that year. And I believe that was like the 2007, 2008 year. And we didn't even use any technology. We literally did it on legal-sized papers. This district is small enough where there's really no excuse as to why we can't do everything we can do to increase our graduation rate. We also received a report on online credit recovery courses. For the 2015-16 school year, students collectively earned 109 credits through online credit recovery. And by June, it's projected that another 150 credits will be earned by students through online credit recovery. We need to make sure that we continue to use technology to our advantage, whether it be the parent smartphone app that President White talks about or our online credit recovery courses, to ensure that we're moving into the 21st century to be able to serve 21st century students. Lastly, I will say that there is a resolution for your consideration, Resolution 565. This resolution proposed the agreement to contract with an independent evaluator to examine the 15-16 performance of persistently struggling schools. This is required under New York State Education Law Regarding Receivership, and is funded through a grant for persistently struggling schools. So because that is a grant, hopefully, we won't be talking about it for an hour. That is advanced to your consideration tonight. We're going to meet again March 17th following the Finance Committee meeting. And I'll also mention that I wanted to, as you know, I'm involved with Unite Rochester. We had a meeting on Monday. I want to thank the superintendent and the President, President White, for attending. We discussed social impact bonds and also got a, saw a video done by the Center for Youth around homelessness. As you know, this district struggles with something around, I believe, close to 3,000 students that are homeless every year in our district. Also, want to congratulate Rock Force 5. They won the Unite Rochester Challenge yesterday. And the reason why it's significant that they won is because they, almost all of them are city school graduates, and they're also all college students at Alfred University. So I want to congratulate them. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Evans, Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Mr. President. My report is equally brief. It's also in writing. I'd like to, we had met on Thursday, February 18th. I'd like to put forth a motion to accept the financial report for January 2016 as presented to the committee.
Second. And moved in second. And all those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
We've also received customary budget amendments to the general fund, special aid, grant fund budget, school, food services, and an overall amendment. Put those forth as a motion as well.
Move it. It moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Aye?
And for your consideration this evening, there are several resolutions regarding facilities. One very exciting resolution you have tonight is with regard to the smartphone. Really want to thank President White for his work on this and the staff who really put together what we think could be an exciting tool for our parents. You know, not everybody has access to computers and Wi-Fi, but it's got to be 90% of folks walk around with smartphones. And so, in terms of President White's thinking and the staff's thinking on this, it was great. And that is, let's find a way of being able to communicate and using the smartphone and putting together an app that specifically helps parents understand what's going on with their students. And so, I'm excited to tell you that we passed in a resolution, at least in our committee, putting forth a resolution this evening for the acceptance of the smartphone app resolution. So we wholeheartedly support that as well. Our next scheduled meeting is at 5:30 on Thursday, March 17th. That's all I have, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Cruz. It's important that I practice what I preach, so I am going to try to be brief as well. I'll sort of cross the bridge from Finance to the President's report, talking about that app, that phone app. There are a lot of blessings to the East High School effort with the U of R. We, the board, created that as sort of an incubator of success. And we've already seen fruits of their labor over there. I had said, hey, listen, somebody said that East High School was the only school that had driver's ed because the University of Rochester started that initiative there. And then I said to Adele and Christiana and to your predecessor, we ought to replicate that in other schools because these suburban districts have driver's education programs, and we only have one high school with a driver's education program? Well, Adele and Christiana got right at it. And I got a memo the other day that we're going to expand it this year, not next year, but this year, to how many other schools? Edison? So I thought I'd read another school, too. Okay. So we're already reaping the benefits of the efforts there. But there's another thing that happened tonight that I'm going to steal. I hope we can steal from the East High School. You have a thing that you call FACE. And I was, all the credit really should go to Ms. Lerner and her staff for this app. They have really worked hard. And I know you realize what a great staff you have in Ms. Lerner and her image and information system team. But I have been trying to think of a name for this app that I could suggest to this team. And I think I have it. FACE. No, no, no. You get no money for this. The FACE app, because it's an acronym for Family and Community Engagement. Think of, where's Chip? Chip's around here. Think of the taglines that you could run with that. FaceTime, Face the Facts, Get in Your Face, right? Because this is going to be a really organic, interactive...
All right, Dan.
Right? Right, right? So I think there's an opportunity here, Anne Marie, right? FACETime app. So we also had, I want to thank again the staff that put together the Black History Month Committee. Again, another successful year. The Pan-African Summit, I saw Mr. Steiner here earlier. He and the folks at Edison. We got a great principal over there, too, by the way. Mr. Larkin is doing a great job over there. Mayor Johnson, Moses Robinson, myself, former Chief Shepherd, participated in a focus discussion about gun violence in the African-American community. I've already talked about the mobile app. And again, the credit goes to the district's information and technology team that I think are going to cause this district to have a gap. We're going to go ahead of the suburban districts. This app is going to be 10 times better than anything that's out in the suburbs. It's going to be one of the first times this district is going to be ahead of the suburban districts. And I had a suburban board member approach me and say, hey, listen, if this app is as good as I hear it's going to be, we may want to buy it from you. It's an Ali comment. You have to continually reaffirm that you believe in something, and then it becomes practice or habit, and then it becomes reality. I think this district is going to do that. Our winter graduation is an example. The kids are actually leading us. These kids, 95 kids. You know, they talk about how these kids graduate in the suburbs. Many of them, it's a walk in the park. For many of those 95 kids, they had to work really hard. And those kids that walked across that stage, right? To be extremely proud of the effort. So while we're not doing it according to state standards, and Commissioner Evans is right, we are going to get to 65, 75, 85% graduation rate. But in the meantime, we are very blessed, as our superintendent says, to have kids who really worked really hard. And I am going to ask that Dennis Francion, formerly one of our own, he was a principal at our Ben Franklin complex. I warned my colleagues I was going to ask him to give a very brief. And Dennis knows, Dennis knows, Dennis knows, this is part of my President's report. It's going to be very brief. Well, you can't object to what goes in my report, no more than I can reject. So Dennis is going to be very brief, and he's going to talk about something that actually is very important because my colleagues are going to have to have a conversation about this. So Dennis, again, keep your promise and be very...
It is. It's only a page and a half. I wrote it out. In 1988, in a 1988 address, Mr. Al Schanker, the president of the American Federation of Teachers, outlined an idea for a new kind of public school where teachers could experiment with fresh and innovative ways of reaching students and become a laboratory of innovation for the district in residence. This sparked the discussion of charter schools. Mr. Schanker argued that charter schools could help reinvigorate the twin promises of American public education to promote social mobility for working-class children and social unity among America's diverse populations. With that said, as founder and CEO of Rochester Career Mentoring Charter School, my original and only intention of creating this career-based high school was to bring about a revolutionary instructional change in the secondary classroom and to become an incubator of change for the Rochester City School District. This is clearly stated in our New York State Education Department's Approved Charter School Application, Page 6. Now Rochester Career Mentoring Charter School and a small Rochester City School District high school have a golden opportunity to join together in sharing and developing their classrooms' best practices with the aid of the New York Charter Schools Dissemination Grant. The purpose of the dissemination grant program is to provide funds to support the dissemination of effective practices and programs that have been developed, tested, and have significantly increased student achievement in New York State charter schools. Funds are made available to charter schools to assist in disseminating their successful innovation to district schools by developing partnerships and sharing innovative ideas. These successful innovations and practices must be designed to improve student academic achievement and graduation. With the help and approval of the Rochester Board of Education, identifying one small city high school to partner with our charter school will help both schools secure the grant's $5,000 over a three-year period. This grant will afford both schools to develop a team-teaching structure, summer staff development programs, which include project-based learning, and the creation... programs, which include project-based learning, and the creation of a personalized learning environment, and identifying strategies to develop and utilize specific curricular and assessment systems. If we partner with this grant, we will have addressed Al Shanker's idea that a brand, a new brand of smarter charter schools, moving us beyond stale debates and back toward the original purpose of charter schools, to build powerful models from which the larger system of public education can learn and share. To be effective laboratories for reform, charter schools cannot be seen as hostile to traditional public schools. Rochester Career Mentoring Charter School is not hostile.
Thank you, Dennis. All right. The reason why I did that, colleagues, is that there is a deadline for this grant. By the way, you correct me if I'm wrong, it's $500,000, not 5,000.
What did I say? 5,000?
5,000.
500,000.
500,000.
Sorry.
That's a big difference.
Correct that one.
That will be corrected for the record. The reason why I mentioned that, we have some time to deliberate over this issue, is there is a March the 11th deadline for this application.
Yes, it is.
And, so, I'll be calling individual Board members to see if I, if there is some consensus around supporting us as a Board, as a district, submitting the application, which doesn't mean it's going to be granted. I realize, to be quite honest, this is somewhat controversial, but in my mind, Dennis is one of our own. His intention was and has always been to improve the lot of City School District children. And, I, and speaking to Dennis privately, and, by the way, we sponsored, the Board of Education sponsored last year a Best Practices Summit, and we invited charter schools to that summit, and Dennis was one of those folks there. I think this is the logical follow-up conversation. And then, one other thing I'll mention, colleagues, the state still has embargoed our list of schools, but we'll be hearing more about that. I'll say this, though. There are some schools on that list that could use support and guidance, and I think there's an opportunity for Dennis, who has a great graduation rate, certainly above that of the district, to bring some of that information and motivation to one of those schools that is on that list. Ladies and gentlemen, we have to use every opportunity at our disposal to improve this district. If we are going to get to 85% graduation rate, we got to start thinking out of the box, and we got to start thinking of partners that we know and we trust, and Dennis is one of those people. I provided you all an email that described this particular initiative. I'll be talking to you some more by phone, but Dennis, I appreciate you taking your time and sharing that with us today.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, that concludes my report. We then move on to the consideration of resolutions. I want to first see if we can get a motion to discuss Resolutions 517 to 530. It's been moved by Commissioner Adams, seconded by? Commissioner Cruz. Any questions or comments to Superintendent Gomes? There being no questions or comments, any, all those in favor of Resolutions 517 to 530, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposition? All right. Let's move on to Resolution 531. Motion? Oh, this is a 10-year resolution? Okay, so, we'll save that for executive session. I'll ask for a motion on executive session later on. 532 to 552, can I get a motion? It's been moved by Commissioner Evans, seconded by?
Second.
Commissioner Powell. Any questions or comments regarding that resolution, those resolutions?
No, I mean, the only thing I'll say, and I'm sure Mr. Kennedy would tell us, is because we have openings, I just, I just continue to be surprised that we're still hiring people in the, just late in the year, but I guess it has something to do with maybe vacancies in their, in their, in their important positions that we're doing.
Can you nod your head? You guys nod your head, that's correct? Very briefly? You got to step to the mic so they can record you. Thank you.
Yeah. Good evening. Basically, it's because we have retirements and resignations, so we have to fill those positions because they are teachers in front of classrooms.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Any other questions regarding Resolutions 532 to 552? There being no further questions, all those in favor of Resolutions, Human Capital Initiative Resolution 532 to 552, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposition? All right. Can I get a motion to discuss Resolutions 553 to 557? Been moved by Commissioner Cruz, seconded by?
Second.
Commissioner Evans. Any questions or comments regarding those resolutions? There being no questions or comments, all those in favor of Resolutions 553 to 557, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposition? All right. We're going to next discuss or ask questions about budget resolutions, 558 to 552. Been moved by Commissioner Cruz, our Finance Chair, seconded by?
Second.
Commissioner Evans. Any questions or comments?
Yes, that these have been discussed at length in Finance.
It's an important thing to note. I know Commissioner Evans and Commissioner Cruz have done that. You all who are rookies to this process, this isn't the first time we're looking at these. We've discussed these and vetted these at hearings. So, any questions that have been, were necessary, were asked previously. All those in favor of Resolutions 558 to 561, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposition? Those resolutions have been approved. We're going to move on to discussion of Educational Facilities Resolutions, 562 to 563. I get a motion? Move it. It's been moved and seconded by Commissioner Hallmark. Is that you?
Yeah, it was.
Okay. Any questions or comments regarding Resolutions 562 to 563?
Just again, a very discussed, discussed at Finance, you know, so.
All right. Any other questions or comments? There being no further questions or comments, all those in favor of Resolutions 562 to 563, say aye. Aye? All right. And, we have other. Those are Resolutions 564 to 574. I would just note for you all, just for the record, as in all instances involving these resolutions, we're voting on these in consecutive order. So, your vote is being cast for 564, 565, and so forth. Any, I need a motion to discuss those resolutions?
Move it.
Been moved by Commissioner Evans and seconded by?
Second.
Commissioner Cruz. Any questions or comments regarding those resolutions? There being no questions or comments, all those in favor of Resolutions 564 to 574, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
The ayes have it, Madam Clerk. That concludes our consideration of resolutions. There is no unfinished business. As Commissioner Powell had remarked, the students with serious or life-threatening medical conditions, that's an informational item. She's described the process going forward for that particular resolution, and that will come before us, I think, at the next business meeting. Our next business meeting is, in fact, March 24, 2016, at 6:30. I need a motion to go into executive session, and that is being made by Commissioner Hallmark and seconded by? Commissioner Cruz. Ladies and gentlemen, for those of you who are diehard Board of Education fans, we're going to come back into open session downstairs in the second floor, and you can see us there at the end of the meeting. Thank you. Have a good evening.